I call this meeting to order. We'll begin with a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Roll call, please.
Anthony Brown. William Wiley.
Present.
Margaret Shepherd.
Present.
James Gallant.
Present.
Moetin Nubi.
Present.
Rene Burgess.
Present.
Evelyn Harris Clark. You have a call.
Thank you. Item three, acknowledgement of board member absence notification.
Yes, Madam Chair, we received notification from Mr. Brown that he would be absent today.
Thank you. Item four, additions and deletions to the agenda.
I have nothing.
Alright, thank you. Item five, disclosure by board members and adoption of the agenda.
Good evening, Chair.
Good evening.
Laina Busby. For the city of Riviera Beach. Good evening, Board. Now, at a previous meeting, Mr. Anthony Brown, he did provide a disclosure and he did abstain from voting on two items pursuant to the voting conflict for municipal public officers. I'm going to be reading Form 8B into the record. It has previously been filed with the clerk and I think she's provided it in your packet this evening, a copy of each form because he had two separate disclosures. So if you just give me a minute, I'm gonna read this form into the record. Form 8B memorandum of voting conflict for county municipal and other public officers. This has been filed by Anthony Brown, St. Clair of the Planning and Zoning Board. His mailing address is 1928 Gardenia Court, Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County. And this was, the voting occurred on March 11, 2021 for the city of Riviera Beach. His position is an appointive position. Now, his disclosure of local officer's interests. He has signed this disclosure form and affidavit as disclosing that on March 11, 2021, a measure came before the agency which inured to his special private gain or loss and it inured to the special gain or loss of his business, Brown &amp; Phillips, Inc. The comp, he has, in the affidavit, attested that the company, he stated, "The company in which I am a partner, Brown &amp; Phillips, Inc., performed a topographic survey and plat for the 4.43 acre tractor supply site. This might have been regarded as a conflict of interest, so I did not vote on that item, but participated in the discussion." He also marked that he did not attempt to influence the decision prior to the meeting in which the vote was taken. Now, Mr. Anthony Brown also filed a separate Form 8B memorandum of voting conflict for municipal public officer as his position on the Planning and Zoning Board. Again, his mailing address is 1928 Gardenia Court, Riviera Beach, Palm Beach County. And this, he has, this is a vote that occurred on April 8, 2021. And in his disclosure, he attested that on April 8, 2021, a measure came before the Planning and Zoning Board which inured to his special private gain or loss. He attested that my company, Brown &amp; Phillips, Inc., performed a topographic survey on a 3.97 acre lease parcel for the port of Palm Beach. This might have been considered a conflict of interest, so I did not vote on the item, but participated in the discussion. This was filed on May 10, 2021, and he attested to that. And that is the end of that, those two disclosures.
Thank you, Mrs. Busby. Let the record reflect that the Chair, Mrs. Clark, is now present and I will be turning the gavel over to her. We'll give her a moment to get settled in.
Thank you, Vice Chair, appreciate it. Have we adopted the agenda already?
No. We're right on that part.
Simone. May I have an ink pen, please? Okay, thank you. Thank you, Madam Vice Chair, appreciate your diligence and carrying on. I appreciate your teammanship and welcome to everyone. I have a out-of-town...
Your microphone.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, everyone, I appreciate your patience. I've just came from Fort Lauderdale Airport. I have family visiting and we fought traffic and I got here as soon as I could and thank goodness I live right across the street. Alright, so we've already covered board members' disclosures and Madam Vice Chair, we don't have any?
We had one, that's what Mrs. Busby was reading into the record.
Okay, so now we're at the adoption of the agenda. And so since we've had opportunity to review, may I have a motion to accept the agenda as is?
Simone.
Okay, may we have a vote, ma'am?
I'm sorry, the motion was made by whom?
May we have a vote for the adoption of the agenda?
If I may clarify, the motion was made by whom?
Mr. Gallant.
Mr. Gallant II, by Ms. Shepherd, thank you. William Wiley?
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd?
Yes.
James Gallant?
Yes.
Moetin Nubi?
Yes.
Rene Burgess?
Yes.
Evelyn Harris Clark?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, everyone received a copy of the... Everyone received a copy of our last meeting minutes and should have had an opportunity to review the minutes. Are there any corrections, adjustments, any changes to that meeting, to the meeting minutes? Having none, I make a motion that we approve the meeting minutes of April 8, 2021 as is. May I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, may we have a vote?
William Wiley?
Yes.
Margaret Shepherd?
Yes.
James Gallant?
Yes.
Moetin Nubi?
Yes.
Rene Burgess?
Yes.
Evelyn Harris Clark?
Yes.
Unanimous vote.
Seeing that we don't have any unfinished business, let's move on to new business. I do have a question. I do have a question that I would like to add a discussion on to the agenda. I don't know if it should be on new business or general discussion.
We could put it under general discussion if you'd like.
Chairman's, Chairman's pleasure.
Okay, so I'd like to make an addition that, under general discussion, I'll just add something there. So considering that, there is not any new business, so we're gonna go on to our workshop items, training workshop session one, introduction, disclosures, and sunshine law. And I know some of us have been through some of the training before, but it's good for the new people to go through it and some of us to get through those refreshers. So, Planning and Zoning Board, we are going to turn it over to the experts.
Thank you, Madam Chair. For the record, I am Clarence Sermons, Director of Development Services for the city of Riviera Beach. And speaking for myself and the rest of staff today, we are very excited to be before you today to finally have the opportunity to execute this first of a series of training sessions for the Planning and Zoning Board, for yourselves. You guys, you all are the advisors for the decision-makers of the city and it is a very important role. And to highlight that, at a recent meeting of these, the CRA, the Redevelopment Agency of the city, which has the same board as our City Council, there was an important development item before them and the board members were not ready to make a decision because they stated that they wanted to hear from the Planning and Zoning Board first before they made their decision. I mean, that was one of the reasons that they wanted the item to come back at a later date and that just highlights how much the advisory status in items that comes from this body, how important they are to the policy and decision-makers of the city. And that's a great thing because in my interactions with everyone on the board here, I know that you all take your job serious and rightfully so because land is a finite resource and we have a limited amount of it here in the city of Riviera Beach and we want to make sure every land development transaction is in the best interest of everyone involved, especially the citizens here. So thank you all for taking your role serious and that's why we're so excited to have the time and opportunity to begin this series of training sessions or curriculum that we've developed based on your feedback on the, from the survey of things that you all want to know more about, the things that we understand that are very important for you guys to know. And that's why we're excited to be here today. So we're launching it to fulfill our duty to you. We are the staff, subject matter expertise that, that come to advise and serve you, but ultimately your recommendation is what goes to City Council and that's very important. So we're, we're launching this today to fulfill our duty to you, but as well as to, to preserve the legacy of Mr. Hunt, who also got the wheels into motion for these training sessions and highlighted the importance of them. So we're glad to be here today for that reason as well. I'm going to allow staff to go through this well-crafted presentation that they've prepared for you all and I cannot speak highly enough of the professional staff that you have in front of them. It is an absolute pleasure to work with them and this department has excelled by, in just about every measure, since this team has come together to serve the city as advisory staff to you all and the City Council. They are bona fide rock stars, in my opinion. They are subject matter expertise and they are some of the hardest working employees in this city and I mean that sincerely. So they've prepared a great presentation to you, for you today. And again, this is in the first in a series and we're gonna start with some higher level things and we're gonna get more specific and granular as these training sessions progress. So I'm gonna turn it over to Planning Staff and you guys, if you're not excited yet, get there. Thank you for the opportunity.
We are excited. We've been asking for this for at least a couple of years and I do agree that the Planning and Zoning Department, you guys are rock stars. I also want to say that our body here as board members, that each and every one of my colleagues here are rock stars. I also want to add too, that I get a lot of feedback from the community as Chair of the P&amp;Z Board. And the feedback is that the residents, as well as City Council, pay great attention to these meetings, some of the decisions that we have made just recently as it regards to, or in regards to language that we've been adding when new development opportunities are presented to us and our due diligence and our, to get commitments from those individuals who are coming to do business in Riviera Beach. That has been received very positive and I want the P&amp;Z Board to continue to push the envelope, to bring us up to par with other municipalities and the training and the series of training will begin to get us on that path.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Sermons, for that introduction. As he stated, we're going to be very high-level tonight. Tonight's training is an introduction. We're also gonna cover some very exciting legal information and this will be a launching pad for some of the more detailed and granular trainings that we have in the future. So tonight, we're going to quickly cover the history of planning, introduction to the Planning and Zoning Board, an introduction to our department, an introduction to the public hearing application process. And then we're going to unveil something we're very excited about, a new addition to our webpage. We're going to transition to a legal update. And then we're gonna close out with questions and answers and just the future training sessions. And we can certainly add to the list of future training if there's not something on the list that you would like to see there.
Sure, let me ask a question because this is the first start of a series. How much time has the P&amp;Z Department allotted for this evening, so everyone's expectation to know when a hard stop is?
Well, I think our presentation should take perhaps half an hour.
Entirety?
In its entirety and then we can spend some time on questions and answers and we didn't really set a hard stop, but, so I defer to the board on the schedule. The important thing is that we answer your questions and if we don't have the answer tonight, we'll take the question down and research it and report back.
Okay.
Fair enough?
Sure, hopefully, I would say we take about for this evening, an hour and if we need a little bit more time, we could get consensus from the board members.
That sounds lovely, certainly, thank you. So, just very quickly, what is planning and where did it begin? Planning is how a city or a community guides and accommodates growth and development. Planning, in a practical sense, began long before there was a name for it. As you know, the settlers planned both in how they separated different uses and when they began to navigate land transfers and land grants and they established their farms. Planning encourages the separation of uses for the health, safety, and general welfare of the public. How did planning begin in Florida? The legal framework for planning in Florida started in the 1970s with the Florida State Comprehensive Planning Act of 1972 and that's what established the original comprehensive planning process at the state level and a state comprehensive plan. Then, in 1978, the legislature lessened the strength of the comprehensive plan at the state level and ruled that it was advisory only. But still, that was landmark. Florida has been a leader as far as comprehensive planning goes. You write comprehensive plans and then you use them to direct your actions and not every state does that. So that's wonderful. The Environmental Land and Water Management Act of 1972, that focused on your areas of critical state concern and developments of regional impact. And then the Local Government Comprehensive Planning Act of 1975. And that required local governments to also adopt and implement comprehensive plans as similar to the state. Now, in the 1980s, Florida determined that what they put into place was not effective and so the legislature did an overhaul of the framework and the support system for it. So in the 1980s, they established Chapter 163, Florida statutes, and that's the Local Government Comprehensive Planning and Development Act. This section provides the minimum requirements for long-range planning. We look to this section for guidance on how we perform many of our duties as far as notice and communicating with other boards and agencies. Chapter 186, State and Regional Planning, this requires planning at all levels of government to be integrated. We have to communicate. Thank you so much. Chapter 380, the Environmental Land and Water Management Act. This looks again at development of regional impacts and areas of critical state concern, but then it combines land management and water management together. So we're trying to reduce the silo effect. Now, in 2011, Florida again overhauled the comprehensive planning process and they enacted the Community Planning Act. And what that really did is it shifted responsibility and authority for planning to the local governments and really reduced the state role in land planning processes. Some would say that really the state kind of gutted their authority and delegated everything to the regional and local level. The local planning process now includes the local comprehensive plan, the Code of Ordinances, and the capital improvements programming for the city. Why do we plan? Planning considers the present conditions and resources of a community and provides the roadmap to the future. It ensures that future development will occur in the way and in the location that the community wants it to. It allows for economic development while protecting the overall vision that the community has for itself. In short, you have to plan for the future community that you want. Planning helps us balance or consider various needs as well as the availability of resources and infrastructure. Planning occurs in response to federal or state legislation. For example, years ago, there was wellhead protection at the state level and all the municipalities had to hurry up and do something about that. Planning considers a community's strengths, weaknesses, opportunities, and threats as part of the analysis. Planning protects the public health, safety, and welfare. How do we plan? How do we plan? Comprehensive planning. We analyze what we have, which is the current conditions, what we want to have, which is our community vision, and what we need to do to achieve the vision, which is the implementation. This is an iterative process. It's strategic. We also do local review of projects, that's what you do. We implement the comprehensive plan with every local development permit. Staff and the board and the council consider the project both as far as its scope and if it is consistent with the Code of Ordinances and the comprehensive plan. That analysis is front and center in every staff report you receive for projects that come before you. We also do special studies or area plans. It's not uncommon for area-specific plans to be developed, for example, a Greenway Plan or a Downtown Master Plan, waterfront district. So who does the planning? The Planning and Zoning Board. What is a planning official? Well, the American Planning Association defines planning officials as "any appointed or elected officials involved in planning decisions for the betterment of a community, region, state, or country." So again, we're involved in planning decisions for the betterment of a community. You are a planning official. This job is one of public trust and is one of the most meaningful ways, in my opinion, that you can serve your community and shape its future. So we thank you for your service. In the city of Riviera Beach, the Planning and Zoning Board is appointed by the City Council and serves in an advisory capacity to the City Council by making recommendations on projects and applications for consideration by the Council. The Planning and Zoning Board has seven regular members and two alternate members. You review land use changes, both map and text, zoning changes, again, map changes and text changes, plats, which are changes to the boundaries of parcels, site plans, and abandonments. So Section 27 of our Land Development Code is about planning and the planning board and I inserted a couple of excerpts right from the code here, which I would like to read to you. Section 2732, advisory status. All decisions of the planning board and of the plating board, which is you, are of an advisory nature. The City Council may, by a majority vote of its members, overrule, override, change, modify, cancel, or approve any decision of the board. Now, the general duties of the planning board are laid out in Section 2733 and I will go through them. One duty, making, amending, extending, and adding to the master plan for the physical development of the city as defined in Section 27-36. Exercising of control over plating and subdividing land within the city. Drafting for the City Council an official map of the city and recommending or disapproving proposed changes in such map. And this would be your zoning map. And every time you approve a rezoning, you're actually amending that map, as you know. Making or, making and recommending or disapproving proposed changes in such a plan, which is your zoning regulations. Making plans for the clearance and rebuilding of slum districts and blighted areas within the city. And this board implements that under your MEHOP section. It's Chapter 26. Submitting annually to the city manager, not less than 120 days prior to the beginning of the budget year, a list of recommended major capital improvements relating to planning and zoning, which in the opinion of the board are necessary or desirable to be constructed during the forthcoming six-year period, and this is a capital improvements plan. Promoting public interest in and understanding of the master plan and of planning, zoning, and slum clearance. And meeting not less than once each month and keeping a public record of its resolutions, findings, and determinations. Now, we frequently meet twice a month, but the requirement is one and we appreciate your willingness to come twice a month for us. So that's a brief history and that talks a little bit about our Code of Ordinances and you, the planning board. So if you'll indulge us, we'll talk about ourselves, the Development Service Department. What is in the Development Services Department? We have three main divisions. We have building and permits. We have code compliance and planning and zoning. The Planning and Zoning Division includes the following positions. We have Josu Ledger. He is transitioning to our Principal Planner Comprehensive Planning position, but we will keep bringing him back here, so he won't get away. We have a Principal Planner Current Planning Position, that's currently vacant. We have a Senior Planner GIs Specialist Position. We have a hire in process, right now it's still vacant. We have a planner position, that's Ms. Davidson. And I'm the Assistant Director of Development Services. I'm a planner and I spend at least 80% of my time in the service of this board and with the interests of this board and the city in mind. And with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Ledger.
Good evening, board members, Chair. Josu Ledger, Development Services. So how does a project get from an idea to an application? So typically, whenever a potential applicant wants to develop something in the city or bring a project to the city, they'll first call the department. They'll ask to probably speak to the planner on call and just start discussing what they're thinking. They'll, they'll ask us, based on what I'm thinking, "What do you think?" So staff will pretty much guide them as, as it relates to the code and eventually allow them to, to understand the process that they will go through as, as far as bringing in the projects and eventually advise them to hire the proper professionals that will be able to help them bring the project forth, so.
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Go ahead.
On this hierarchy, who would be the first initial contact person for the client?
So the planner on call typically, because it's so general at that point, there has, it has not yet been a specific project or staff has not yet identified the project. It's general. So typically applicants will just be fetching for information, so the first point of contact will be the planner on call.
Thank you.
No problem. So of course, hiring professionals to perform their surveys, prepare their civil engineers' plans, their site plans. Once, we advise the applicant, once you have a draft or a certain level of completeness of the documentations that we discuss, of general... or a certain level of completeness of the documentations that we discuss generally, they can then schedule a pre-application meeting that will allow staff more time to take a look into what they're proposing and sit down and discuss with them. At that pre-application meeting, so staff will guide them as it relates to what may be problematic to what they're proposing, because at that point, they actually have a draft that they bring to the meeting. We're looking at the draft site plan, and we'll tell them, for example, you're required a minimum of 15-foot landscape buffer or right-of-way buffer. At the beginning, they may not know that. Or they may know that, but they're planning to seek for variance to get rid of that. So those are the type of discussions that takes place at the pre-application meeting. Once we look at the proposal versus consistency with the code, then we will advise them, based on your proposal, you're ready to actually schedule official submittal, to submit the project. If they're not ready, we will recommend that they go hatch it out more and bring it back for another pre-application meeting so that we can confirm the project they're bringing forward will comply with code. So we go over the fees. We go over the required documentations that they will need as part of their application packet during the pre-app. We go over the timeframe that the project may... It all depends on the project. So we will ask them, what is the timeline they're looking at? And based on their timeline, we'll tell them a realistic timeline. Of course, this is not our first time looking at these projects, so we do have an idea of how long a certain project may take. So we would advise them typically, if you're bringing this type of project, you're looking at a minimum of four to six months to complete the process. So upfront, we will be very transparent with them so they understand what they're getting themselves into from the beginning. And also go over the fee schedule, how much it's going to cost based on the land development fee schedule. So once the applicant is ready and they're formally submit their project, staff then take the packets. We typically require six copies and a disc, one CD disc to be submitted digitally. Staff takes the packet, distributes it to our peer reviews, engineering, utility department, zoning, which is us, fire, police, and building for their reviews based on their expertise. Typically, we would allow two weeks timeframe for their review so the other reviewers can submit their comments to the zoning staff, which is the project manager, the point person for the entire project. Then we'll take the comments and provide those comments to the applicant or agent. For plaid applications, staff secures a peer review quote from an independent consultant that will provide comments, that would review and provide comments for plaid applications. So of course, whenever the applicant submits the plans, based on the reviews, they'll get comments. So those comments, staff, they will have an opportunity to resubmit to staff the corrections based on the prior comments that has been provided. And staff will redistribute the packets again to all the individuals or reviewers that had comments and make sure that whether the applicant satisfies their comments moving forward to ensure whether the site plan will be in a stage where it's ready to be, to go to the public hearing phase, which will be the next phase. The revision and resubmittals review process is repetitive, and this is where the applicant processing time can be variable. So that's why we don't try not to tell an applicant it's going to take you exactly two, three months or three months, because it all depends. It all depends on how responsive the applicant is when staff provide comments, how long it takes them. Sometimes they submit a project, staff provide comments, and applicant may take two to three months before they actually reply or provide corrections to staff. So the timing of projects, it all depends on the projects and the responsiveness of the applicant. When the plans have been revised to satisfy all comments, for the most part, staff will identify the next available Planning and Zoning Board meeting date and work with the applicant to ensure that we're provide sufficient notice. So that includes, we'll post the property. You guys may be familiar or may have seen those big yellow signs. And we are required to post those properties 15 days prior to the Planning and Zoning Hearing Date. In some cases, we will provide courtesy notices for adjacent properties within 300 feet of the subject property and questions. And we'll also generate a legal ads through the Palm Beach Post advertising the project within the Palm Beach Post. Staff will then prepare a staff report and a packet for the Planning and Zoning Board. Also prepare a PowerPoint presentation for the board. The packet is assembled also digitally and posted on the website and is distributed to the Planning and Zoning Board for at least one week ahead of the meeting date, prior to the meeting date. The Planning and Zoning Board, after hearing the presentation on the application, will do the following four things. Make a favorable recommendation, a favorable recommendation with conditions, an unfavorable recommendation, or continues the hearing. After the project is acted upon by the Planning and Zoning Board, staff will work with the applicant on scheduling and notice for the City Council's agenda. We'll draft resolutions or ordinances, depends on the request by the applicant, and prepare another packet of information in advance for the hearing for the City Council. Once the City Council voted on the resolutions or ordinances, then the clerks provide staff with an executed copy of that ordinance or the resolution. Then staff will stamp the plans. Once the applicant receives the resolution or ordinance and the stamp plan, they can now apply for a building permit. And this concludes my part of the presentation. I'll turn it over to Ms. Davidson.
Thank you. If I may interject just one moment. As we're going through the modules, what I would like to propose to the board that if everybody is writing and having their questions prepared, that we take each module, exhaust all of our questions for that module, go on to the next module, do the same, and so on, so that when we're speaking and getting more clarification from each module, that we're all on the same accord, getting the same information, and we're not jumping from module to module. If that's agreeable, to move in that way with our questions, we can go on to the next module and then we'll open it up to the board for questions. Thank you.
It's up to you.
So we wanted to explain the process that every application goes through because we spend a lot of time getting to know these projects and touching them and working with the applicants before they even get here, before you. And we try to do our due diligence so that we're ready to support you as you do your due diligence. Now, I'm very pleased to tell you that we have added a page to our webpage. It's called Applications Under Review. And this came out of a conversation that we had with the Chair one night, and we were talking about how we can better serve you and how we can help you prepare for the meetings before, you know, you get your application. And then if it's a big meeting, you have a lot of things to get through. And so as a result, we've added a page to our website titled Applications Under Review. I have to thank Mr. Ledger, Ms. Davidson, and Mr. Marcello. This was a team effort. You can access this page from our Planning and Zoning Division page. It's intended to contain a list of all of our applications that we have in front of us that are in that process that Mr. Ledger just explained. So we may have projects in front of us for several months before they get to you. So we wanted to be transparent and provide that information to you. And so this is the Planning and Zoning page. And the second row down, it may be hard to see, but there's a blue button, and it's called Applications Under Review. And so if you go to our Planning and Zoning Division page and you click on Applications Under Review, you will see this page. And then here's a close-up for you. This is a table, and in this table, the first column has the application type and number. So we're trying to tell you, is it a site plan? Is it a plat? Is it an abandonment? And then we put our number, that's our file number. The second column is a description of the project. So we'll put down what it is and the address. Sometimes we identify things by address. Project manager. Once a project comes in and is submitted, one of us takes point on the project. Now, that doesn't mean that if it's my project, you can't ask Joe Zhu questions or vice versa. But it's a way to organize who's the main point of contact just for continuity and clarity for the applicant and the process. We have added a column for Planning and Zoning Board Meeting Date. And then we've added a column for the City Council Meeting Date. Our hope is that this is a benefit to the Planning and Zoning Board, the City Council, and interested parties. And sometimes you may have a project that you want to track as it moves through the process. And that's why those meeting dates are up there. So when you're on this page, the application type and number are red. Those are links. So if you look at that list and you say, you know, "I would like to see the files for the daycare", you click on that one, you'll get taken to another page for that project. And here you will see all of the PDFs that have been submitted to staff. So for this example, there's a land use application, a traffic study, a survey, a floor plan, and a plat, for the example. And so obviously, every project will be different. But this is how, if there's a project of interest that's coming your way or you want to know what is submitted, what do we have that we're working on, now you can take a look. And then if you review something and you have further questions, obviously, you can reach out to us. So we're very excited about this. We hope that it will be a resource. And as you get to wrap your arms around it and try it out, if you have ideas or suggestions about how we can improve it and make it even more user-friendly for you, please, by all means, let us know. Okay? And with that, I am done with that part of the presentation. I could take questions, or I could turn it over to Ms. Busby.
Okay. We have laws governing P&amp;Z. Were we covering that this evening too?
For what?
It says laws governing P&amp;Z.
We can't hear you.
I'm sorry. Laws governing P&amp;Z Board 101. Are we covering that this evening too?
We went through a brief explanation of the legislation at the start of the process. And now Ms. Busby is going to be talking about disclosures and the sunshine law.
Okay, great. Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Chair, Board.
Good evening.
Well, I'm excited that you are eager, Chair, to get to the laws governing this board. Sometimes, like you can see in my first slide, the city attorney's office notices some nappers. But really, I'm glad that Mr. Sermons discussed this training in dedication to Mr. Hunt because I remember Mr. Hunt had a lot of really great questions about the laws governing the board. So we're going to start with the biggest law, the sunshine law. And that's found in the Florida statutes. Sunshine law is really unique because it provides this right of access to all of governmental proceedings of public boards. That's our board. And I'm going to, throughout my slides, I'm going to talk about the different legal requirements. And then I'm going to do the Socratic method and just call on each of you randomly to see if you can answer a question about the law. It's going to be very straightforward. No tricks. So the first thing I'm going to tell you about the sunshine laws, it applies to any gathering of two or more members of the same board to discuss some matter which will foreseeably come before that board for action. So, Mr. Wiley, you get the first question. If you go and meet with Ms. Shepherd at the senior center to discuss your upcoming college reunion, does the sunshine law apply?
No.
Okay, you're right. Exactly. Because that's not something... You can answer, go ahead.
No, it's not business-related or related to the city.
That's right. Okay, so...
But he's in the same class.
Well, maybe he just wants some information about her last reunion. So there are three basic requirements for our advisory board meetings. First, the meeting has to be open to the public. Check. Second, reasonable notice of such meetings have to be given. Check. We provide seven days' notice. And the last thing is minutes of the meeting must be taken and promptly recorded. So we have somebody here that records the minutes of our meetings, and we also are recording them for television purposes. Okay. Next slide. This was a great question that our former planning and zoning board member, Mr. Hunt, brought up one time. He said, "Can I have a discussion about an item that's going to go to the City Council with a City Council member?" And guess what? The answer is yes, except if you are delegated the authority from your board to act on behalf of the board, no, you can't. But most usually, that doesn't really happen. We don't really see that at the Planning and Zoning Board where you guys elect to have one member convey your position as a board. So if Councilperson McCoy wants to come and grill you about the last board meeting, please feel free to meet with him. And the other thing is, I would advise the councilperson that they cannot be acting in a position as a liaison as well. Okay? So it goes both ways. Okay? Here's our next slide. You find yourself at a community meeting, and we'll say, like, sometimes there's community meetings, mothers against drunk drivers, right? And you notice that there is another board member present. And they might start talking about, they might start discussing certain road closures or certain things related to their business at that community meeting. I'm going to ask you, Ms. Chair Evelyn Harris-Clark. If you went up and started discussing those road closures with Mr. Gallin, would that be a potential sunshine violation?
There are two or more board members gathered, so I would say we should not be discussing that because it's two of us.
That's correct. That's a good answer. Mr. Gallin, what if you just heard the Chair give her opinion about that road closure? You just heard it. Do you think that's a sunshine violation?
No, because I don't know anything about it. It hasn't come before us, so...
Okay. Well, your first instinct in "no," that's right. The Attorney General of Florida has determined that if there's no discussion back and forth between the two members, that technically, it's not a sunshine violation. But we do like to avoid those situations because it makes it a little bit, you know, messy. The other thing is, some people think if they go to these community meetings as a board member, that they can get up there and say, "I'm a citizen today. I'm not a board member." Unfortunately, that doesn't... You, of course, can go as a citizen, but if there are other board members present, you don't want to get into that back-and-forth discussion with each other about an issue that could foreseeably come before your board. So the other good question I have, because we have a very active mayor, is can I meet with the mayor? with the mayor? The mayor of the City of Riviera Beach is in a very unique position. He's not a member of the sitting council. He doesn't possess any power to vote on items. But he can veto legislation. So some people think, well, maybe because he can veto, maybe I shouldn't have a discussion with the mayor about an item. But actually, you can privately meet with Mayor Felder. It would not be a violation of the sunshine law, provided that neither of you are acting on behalf of your entire board. Okay? Now we're going to move away from sunshine law and more into public records. Because public records really govern all of the work that we do. And a lot of people wonder, well, what is a public record? What is my obligation as a member of the board? Public records are basically all the documents, the letters, maps, books, tapes, photographs, sound recordings, video, any kind of software, anything that is being used to communicate your position about city business and can be copied. And we really look at it regardless of the physical form or means of transmission. So, so, um, they're found in emails, text messages, and it doesn't matter the location. And let me explain that. If, um, I'll say Mr. Nukumbi, if Mr. Nukumbi transmits a text message from his personal cellphone to the personal cellphone of a developer, is that text message subject to the public records law and must be preserved and disclosed? I'm going to ask you.
Yeah.
Board member, Nukumbi.
I'll say yes.
You're correct. It doesn't matter that it's from your personal cellphone. You are communicating a message. What if the developer wrote back, we're going to get this before your board, it's going to be a great development, and can't wait to hear your comments on it? And you texted back that little, you just pressed that little button that said thumbs up. Is the thumbs up, is that public record or just the, the words?
It would be public record.
Good instinct. So I've noticed that the law hasn't really addressed that nuance, but I think eventually it will because even our reactions can mean something if it goes before the board. So now there's some little letters over here on the other side that might be hard for you guys to see, but I wanted to fit it all in because it's really important. What is not a public record? So I noticed some of you are very conscientious board members and you may take little notes to remind yourself about something later. Do you think, Mr. Gallin, that would be a public record? The note that you wrote to yourself that said, remember that this item is good for federal heights?
No.
Okay, you're right. That's not a public record. It's really something for you personally. Now, this is, can get a little bit nuanced because there's a lot of cases where people have written notes and put it in a final, in a file. And the courts have found that sometimes those notes can be public record. So as your board attorney, I just caution you that anytime you have notes and you file away in something that could be a public file for the city, just know that that eventually could be a public record. And I mentioned a Miami Herald case because the commissioner tried to argue that when he wrote this memo for his personal use, it was not a public record. And the court said, nope, it was. It was the only remaining document that pertained to that particular issue and they said, we're treating it as a public record. And the courts really treat public records with a very broad stroke. So they're going to err in favor of finding that it's a public record. Now, this also means you have an obligation as a board member to preserve your public records or else the city can be sued. And I have a slide here that shows a lawsuit that our office dealt with some years ago when Scripps Media decided to make a public records request for some text messages from a City Council member. And he essentially said, I don't have them. He said his phone dropped in the ocean and it thereby deleted all the messages. So that case really came down to the penalty. They really were looking at whether that was an intentional or an unintentional violation of the public records law. And Scripps Media was trying to say that it was intentional. And of course, the city held the position that, you know, these accidents happen. It ended up settling outside of court. We didn't want to go into a trial on it. And you'll see why. Don't be like this board. This is a planning and zoning advisory board in the City of Florida that the court found, and they went to a four-day trial, and the court found that they did in fact violate the public records law and sunshine. And the way it happened was because they started meeting, like four members of, or five members of their board, met at a different community meeting, right? It was called a Concerned Neighbors Meeting. And at that meeting, they were all discussing things that were reasonably going to come before their board. They were talking about garages and parking. And eventually, somebody sued and said, you're violating sunshine law. And one of their defenses were, hey, we have a right, a First Amendment right, to assemble and to free speech. But the court said, no, not when you're on a government board and subject to sunshine law. You're not just a spectator. Rules and laws apply to you. And if it didn't, then every council member could have a secret meeting and simply say, well, I have a First Amendment right. And that would really make the sunshine law meaningless. So, don't be like them because now that city is going after those members to recover $250,000 in attorney's fees. That goes to penalties. So I'll be quick. A public officer who violates sunshine law, subject to a $500 fine. Knowing violation is a second-degree misdemeanor and that's what was going on in that case that we just discussed in Brandington Beach. But the worst thing is, is if it goes and the court finds that it was a violation of sunshine law, you could recover attorney's fees and court costs. So you may think, well, a $500 fine's not such a big deal and maybe even having a misdemeanor not such a big deal, but I mean, attorney's fees can get expensive. And then of course, if it's a knowingly, a knowing violation, then you're subject to removal or suspension. And it could be punishable for up to a year in jail and five, and a $1,000 fine or both. And this happens more often than you think. You think professionals, they're insulated from these. No. Here you can see that in this slide, we had a Broward Health officials that they were meeting secretly to, at a hotel, to discuss how to terminate their president. And that was government business. They should have complied with the three requirements. So I'm going to say two of them and then I'm going to ask Ms. Shep, Board Member Shepherd, to give me the last one. The three requirements for sunshine law was open to the public, reasonable notice of the meeting, and the third, this is the one that you don't even have to think about because your staff, they come and they bring, they bring Susan. She does the, Susan likes to type and record everything and she's doing the.
Yes.
The minutes.
Exactly. The minutes.
Yeah, she's the night anyway.
Sorry?
The one that, uh...
Well, I think she might be doing it.
Oh, she is here, okay.
Okay, I can't see her. Okay, so the last thing we have to cover is voting conflicts. And tonight, we did a voting conflict for the first time that I've been advising this board. So I was really excited because it's a perfect training method for this board. And we had one of our members, he's absent this evening, but he, I sent him the Form 8B when he notified me at the previous meeting that he had a potential conflict. Now, this applies to anybody who's serving on an advisory board for a city or governmental agency. And your obligations depend on certain factors. First, it depends on whether you're in an elective or appointed office. So Vice Chair Burgess, is this board, do you guys serve in elective positions or appointed positions?
Appointed.
Perfect. Exactly. And a person holding an appointed position cannot vote on anything that would give them or a relative or a business associate any private gain or loss. Some people think it's all about gain, but also it's about loss. So what was good that Mr. Board Member Brown did was he notified the chair and the board that he has a potential voting conflict. He said he would abstain, which is the correct legal recommendation. And then we followed up and had him fill out the form. And then at this next meeting, it was my obligation with the city clerk to make it a part of the minutes and to read it into the record. So it's very important, if you think that you have a conflict, to really explore that with me or err on the side of caution. One of the things you have to know is what is a relative? Because some people think, you know, second cousin, the law would view as a relative. But actually, no. Relatives are husband, wife, brother, sister, in-laws, even though maybe some of us are not that close with them. But those are considered relatives. And the more important person you got to look at too is your business associates. Because I know all of you are professionals and you have a lot of enterprises, you have to look at that very seriously because if it comes before the board and you are an officer as a part of this business or you are somehow connected as a joint venture or co-owner or partner, you will, you will have to abstain from voting on that item. Okay, and so I did a little check mark for when you, what you have to do when you abstain. So the interesting thing about appointed board members is that if you have a voting conflict, you may stay, still participate in the discussion. You just have to comply with certain rules. Like you have to complete and file the Form 8B with the clerk so she can incorporate it into the minutes and then provide it to all the other members of the board. And then we publicly read it aloud. This is what Mr. Board Member Brown did. He made no attempt to influence the decision except by having, participating in the discussion. He disclosed orally the nature of his conflict and then he completed the form, filed it, and we read it into the record. This is why you want to do this. Because here we see ex Boca mayor Susan Haney, she had to plead guilty and actually, this was a gift because they were really looking at more serious public corruption charges. But she pled guilty for her misuse of public office and failure to disclose her voting conflict. This was a situation in which she didn't disclose these items she was voting on, that she was connected to this company with her husband. So she was a partner with her husband with a company. So yeah, nobody wants, we all want to do good work. We don't want any booking photos. Your job on this board is very important. Of course, you know that the community needs you, they value you, and we are here anytime you have a question. Because we really, we try to serve you as well. You serve the community, but we serve you. And there's some little planning memes where you got to entertain yourselves. Do you have any questions?
Yes, we're going to take in a module.
Okay.
Flush out all of the questions. So we're going to start with the first module. And at this point, it's open, our, the first module, let me just get to it. Okay, the history of planning. So that first module, let's just open it up to questions at this point. And just raise your hand so that I can recognize you and we're not overlapping. So the floor is open for questions, starting with Module 1. Any hands up? I do have some questions. I just want to put my hand up. Actually, this question, I want to save it for public, I'm sorry, for general discussion. So I'm going to skip that question. In the planning module, it says drafting for the City Council and official map of the city recommending, disapproving, proposed changes, et cetera. Is there any indication when the last official map had been looked at, started, finished? And again, could, that section, could you elaborate on a role?
So that is referring to our zoning map. And actually, every time this board hears and acts on a rezoning, which you do somewhat regularly, you're actually amending that zoning map. And now we're in the, the digital age. So really, that map is updated on a fairly regular basis. We have it electronically in GIS right now. Mr. Ledger is our resident expert. So as to when this board last continued, considered the, you know, map holistically, like put up the zoning map and talked about it, that likely would have been during a comprehensive planning exercise. And we will be updating the comp plan again fairly soon. So to answer your question, you do amend it regularly, that's your zoning map. We would look at it, big picture-wise, to stand back and say, is the commercial development where we want the commercial development to be? Is the port expanding? What's happening here? Do we need to protect our residential neighborhoods? That would be a conversation we'd have during our comprehensive planning workshops, talking about what do we have now for zoning? And what should the zoning be changed to, to help us get the city to the type of development that we want to have?
Okay, thank you. My next question is in the same module. It talks about the master plan and planning, zoning, and slum clearance. What constitutes slum clearance?
You know, that's an interesting question. I don't think that we define slum in our regulations. I mean, colloquially, it, you know, that's an old term and probably the next time we update the regs, we may modify that language. But, you know, I think that it's referring to areas that perhaps aren't as well-maintained, might be overcrowded or run down. Sometimes, some cities have areas that have a little less attention paid to them, at least in the olden days. That language, when I was reading it to you tonight, I thought, boy, that language probably hasn't been revised for quite a while. But you do address the needs of the community with regard to that section through your MEHOP program. And that's where you try to incentivize affordable housing. That may be a section of our, our comp plan and our regulations that we put a little more focus on if the board wants to in the future. more focus on if the Board wants to in the future.
Yes, I think we should really clarify that. That just jumped out at me, because I guess the word is subjective.
Yeah, we don't really use that type of language anymore, that's why my sense is it hasn't been updated for a while. So we can certainly add that to our list to look at.
Those are my questions. Any other Board Members have questions on this module? Okay, all right, let's go to the next module, which is um, Applications Under Review. And I'm opening the floor up for um, questions under the second module.
Madam Chair.
Yes, go ahead.
I have a question, just a comment. Um, I really appreciate you guys for doing that and taking the time. It seems um, exactly what we needed, so I'd just like to thank you for listening to us and adding that information to the website.
Our pleasure.
Is the floor is open for questions, under Applic, Applications Under Review?
Madam Chair.
You recognize, yes.
Uh, I have one question. I notice, and I see this a lot when we're having our meetings, that from different departments, they would have uh, saying no comments at this time. Does that mean that they can come back with a comment later on after we have made our decision to pass it on to the uh, City Council? Or, you know, I don't think that if they have a comment later, they should have a comment when they first see it. So, you know, how come we see so many of those stating that they don't have any comments at this time?
That's a very good question. So when we receive staff comments, we'll typically, it's an iterative process, so we'll get comments from people, or they'll say no comments at this time. What they're really indicating is no comments. So we do not solicit additional staff comments after Planning and Zoning Board, except in some situations where um, a project may leave the Planning and Zoning Board with direction to address something, um, or perhaps the Board or staff identify that the language may be around employment or an abandonment needs to be corrected. Um, sometimes there, the Planning and Zoning Board, uh, there's one project that was before you a few years ago, and it left the Planning and Zoning Board with conditions to revise the drainage plan. And it hasn't gone to council yet, and in the interim, the drainage plan has been revised. So that's an example where professional staff have commented on the project. Since you voted, you voted that project with a recommended condition of the drainage plan has to meet the town's standards, and I'm paraphrasing, but that's essentially what the condition said. The applicant chose to rectify that so that when the project goes to City Council, it actually does meet the town's standards. So that's one instance. But typically, no. What you see and what you act on, ninety-five percent of the time, ninety-six percent of the time, is exactly what goes to City Council, unless um, Madam Chair, there was one project recently where you asked staff to um, draft language around a couple of conditions, and we did. Um, but otherwise, it's what you see is what they see.
And I might add, that was encompassing of all of us, and the feedback was well received of our work, so I just wanted to acknowledge that.
Good.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Sermons.
And I just wanted to, sorry, add one more thing to that question. Uh, they do get one more um, touch in most of these projects, and that's at the permit stage. So eh, there are instances where there are some um, issues they will look at that are are so technical um, that they're not necessarily needed for the site plan stage, but when they get to the permit stage after the site plan is approved and they submit an actual construction permit, they may say, uh, you know, supply this detail for how this joint or utility connection may come together. So sometimes that could indicate that at the permit stage, they may look a, uh, take a closer look, but the um, the, the, the terms, the essence of what's approved at P&amp;Z would not change uh, after those comments go through, though. But that is one more instance where they do have additional conversations with those different departments.
Okay, thank you.
Some more questions?
Um, I do have a question with the permitting process in the light of COVID. How is that managed in sense of, I see that other municipalities um, have the permitting process go through, for the lack of words, I could be wrong, um, a CAP process, this is online, um, and I don't exactly know how it works, but I know it's in a, a digital um, environment, and how that is um, being approved by the various um, people involved in that permitting process, but it's a, a digital process. Are we doing that, or are we still physical? Um, could you elaborate in the adbed of COVID, how we're handling it?
Of course. So right now, we are still doing a, a great deal of our meetings digitally, we'll do virtual meetings, um, and that's just to be careful with regard to COVID and be protective of both the team's health and everybody else's health. So we will do pre-application meetings, video, um, same with submittals, uh, you know, pre-submit meetings. We try to minimize the um, in-person meetings unless we can do it safely socially distanced. But part two of that conversation, I think, is something that we're very excited about, and that is that the Development Services Department is getting ready to um, use a new permitting software called EnerGov. And this will really, you know, regardless of COVID or no COVID, it will offer an online permitting opportunity. I think it will improve transparency and customer service, and really um, automate a lot of what we're doing. It won't take away our interpersonal interactions, of course, and our phone calls, but I think that it will um, it will be different than what we're doing during COVID as far as electronic meetings, but I think that it will be um, an improvement to our electronic permitting system. Mr. Sermons, do you have anything to add on EnerGov?
Just in the, Mary and I are just gonna tag-team all the questions too, with a dynamic duel. Um, there was a period in our permit department where CAP Government, um, our third-party um, provider for uh, building services, was allowing electronic submittals uh, for permits, and uh, there was varied levels of, of, of efficiency with that. And um, since then, we have completely discontinued uh, using them for electronic, electronic submittals. And uh, for the most part, uh, we have staffed internally our building division, so we rely very little on CAP Government at this, this point, um, only in certain situations where we uh, have too many staff out and can't, you know, fulfill the services we may call on them. For the most part, we're staffed internally now, and, and um, we've come a long way in that Buildings Division. Um, so there was a period, but no, uh, and the main thing, as Ms. Savage said, is um, we are working to transition very soon now to electronic permitting software, um, as well as our planning applications, and, and it will make a huge difference in, in how things are processed and being able to do things from a distance.
Okay, thank you, I was just curious. Okay, all right, any other questions from our Board? Okay, let's move on to um, the next module. I believe that was um, centered around the Sunshine, and we all passed, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Aye, what?
Okay, terrific. Um, let's open it up to questions for the Board. Any other questions around um, the Sunshine Law disclosures?
Madam Chair, I have a question.
Recognize.
Okay, um, well, first of all, just so um, everyone knows here, 'cause I know I don't speak to a lot of people here, as far as our public, uh, as far as our private life. Um, I'm an honors algebra teacher um, at the middle school level, and how I conduct my classes, um, pretty much by strict rules, and the kids have to abide by those rules. And of course, math is a strict subject to where um, two plus two is four, there's never gonna be five, and there's no way to go around that. One thing, I was looking at some of the rules here, um, we talked about, I know you stated that um, if a councilperson wanted to grill um, a Planning and Zoning Board member about something, that he was allowed or she was allowed to do so, and I was saying, how does that not affect the next conversation or the next topic that comes up as far as business? Because at that point, isn't that the uh, uh, influence to what the next would maybe, what the next question maybe, or the next project maybe?
Yeah, um, Board Member Wiley, you raised a really good point. Listen, those are consensual uh, conversations. If you don't wanna have a conversation with a councilperson about it, you don't have to.
And at that point, if they become persistent about some information like that, what, what would you, and then I guess I'm going back to now, the rules, and that's what I was trying to get to, what the rules were.
Yeah, so there's no rules that say that you can't have a conversation with him about an item unless you are speaking for your entire Board. Um, but you know, it's, it's a little bit interesting, it's kinda like how sometimes I might approach the police, like with a consensual encounter. Hey, if I don't wanna talk to the police officer, I can just keep on walking, right? But with a councilperson, you may feel like, just like a police officer, like you have this pressure.
Right.
They're asking you all about it. You could just say, hey, um, why don't you refer to the minutes of the meeting, because we all discussed it as a Board and I gave my opinion about the item. That's if you wanna have like a delicate way to kinda get out of the conversation. But a lot of um, Board Members will ask me, I really wanna talk to um, the Chair of the City Council and tell him, you know, the reason why I think this project is great. And can I do that? And the answer is, yes, most certainly you can.
Okay, if any kind of, um, second part to that question, um, with, I'm trying to make sure I say this properly. Um, if a Board Member, Council Board Member, um, is talking to someone from um, Planning and Zoning Board, to me, I'm trying, I'm, I'm trying to word this correctly, um, I don't think, and I'm just gonna give my personal opinion on it, I don't think there should be no conversation about anything that's being done, especially with contractors, uh, or anyone, whether it's a text message or a discussion before something becomes, comes to Board at all, because that opens up again to um, what was said, interpretation of um, what possibly could have been said, or what it would, you know, as, as what it was meant. Any meeting that any contractor should have, and I think I said this during our last meeting, um, during our last council meeting, that any meeting that someone has with, uh, let's say a contractor, or, or someone's coming in to bring a business into the city, they should meet with everyone, every council member, or every P&amp;Z Board Member at that time during the meeting, and there should not be individual meetings with separate council members at all. Because again, that opens back up to interpretation of what's being said, and how it's being said, and what's being expected from that meeting. And then that person comes back and gets to talk about, gets to vote on that same person who they've had communications with by themselves. And at that point, it should not be allowed. And even looking at some of the rules and regulations here, far as um, the Sunshine laws, personally, again, I hold my kids to, to, to pretty good strict rules, and even with the parents, 'cause I send them an email out almost pretty much every week about certain things that go on in the classroom. Five hundred dollar fine, I don't think that's enough, I don't think that pun, that punishment is strict enough. Um, um, anything that normally violates public records, such as, you know, um, throwing phones in the ocean and, and stuff like that, um, it should be, the punishment should be a lot stiffer, 'cause if we wanna bring in the right people into our city, we have to put in the proper rules and regulations, right? If not, you're gonna attract the same people that you were, you're trying to get out of the city. And I think that the punishment need to look, I don't know whether it's universal, is it a universal rule to where Palm Beach County or Riviera Beach has these rules for Sunshine Law, or is this around the county or the state?
It's statewide.
It's statewide?
Yeah, and when you wanna think about the penalties, just remember, there are, they are elected officials who are voting on the penalties, so.
Right, so you're voting, pretty much voting against themselves. Um, yeah, but again, I think that's something that should be um, actually looked at very strongly, because I think there's a lot of things in the city of Riviera Beach that are um, that are really, this is a great city, but I think there's a lot of accountability and a lot of things that are transparency that could be made to make it a lot easier for us to operate and be able to put things in place for us to be able to thrive like we should, rather than always have certain situations going on like what we had on the, on the paperwork that you were showing.
Well, yes, we certainly appreciate your desire for transparency, and we encourage it. It certainly makes compliance with our laws a lot easier, so yes.
And one, one more thing, and I just wanna say again, to top, copy off what Ms. Burgess said, thank you again for um, educating our citizens. One thing I didn't like during the last couple of elections was that we would go and tell people what to vote for, especially when it came to amendments, we'd say, just vote no, just vote yes. No, we don't need to do that, we wanna educate our citizens. We wanna educate our, our, our community on what these rules are and how they're gonna affect in the future. And then let them, let the people make a decision on what they wanna decide to do at that time. Just don't tell them, hey, just vote no on this, or vote yes on this. Educate them, allow them to come to an educated decision, and then let, let the city make a decision on its own. So thank you for putting this up on the Board, like you said, for our website, so now people can read it and be able to see exactly what their options are and what they can do to actually benefit themselves and benefit the city at the same time, so thank you for that.
Of course.
Any further questions? Okay, seeing that there are not any, I'd like to say thank you so very much, if I can um, express this from all of our Board Members. Um, we really appreciate this very detailed, and I know it took a lot of work from your daily activities to put this together so that we can be better, not only in making our decisions, but be of a lot more value to the city of Riviera Beach. So again, thank you, and I'm sure when we get to um, discussions, um, each Board Member can again, um, express their appreciation. Okay, all right, so um, we have any public comments um, here or via online? Any public comments? Okay, having none, let's go on to correspondence. Um, any correspondence?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. And um, next one is Planning and Zoning Board Comments. So um, let's jump right into um, project updates, um, upcoming projects, and then we'll go into zoning Board Comments.
Um, Madam Chair, so we do have the new webpage up for you, so I encourage you to um, refer to that. Your next meeting is June 10th, and there will be two projects on that meeting, Temporary Fire Station 87, which is gonna be at the Wells location, and then also um, a daycare. And so um, you'll see that the table online indicates that the Planning and Zoning Board meeting is June 10th, so you'll be able to tell which projects are coming on your next agenda. Um, and so, and then all the projects on that page are going to come to you eventually, so um, if you finish those first two projects and you wanna keep reading, we, we've stacked the page for you.
Okay, thank you. Um, let's go on to Board Comments, and I'm gonna reserve myself for last.
All right. Madam Chair.
Yes.
I'd just like to say that static is probably somebody's foot hitting the uh, cord underneath. So try not to kick the, the cord underneath.
All right, restless leg syndrome. Still, I hope it's not me. So if everybody's, we're still getting static?
Mm-hmm.
It's not me.
It's not her, it's, 'cause it happened with my cord, that's how I know.
All right, uh, Madam Vice Chair, let me start with you in terms of Board Comments.
I do not have any Board Comments, um, just thank you for excellent job, I'm really excited about this training and series, so, and I appreciate it, so thank you.
Okay, all right, Board Comments?
No comment.
Um, just an update, um, councilman, excuse me.
I'm sorry, when, we didn't get um, uh, Ms. Burgess, she was next.
Yeah, Ms. Burgess went.
Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Shepherd, I'm sorry. Ms. Shepherd, you were next.
Uh, first, let me thank Mr. Sherman. Um, I'm not too good on, uh, Facebook, but I was flipping through on YouTube and you came up. And I enjoyed the conversation, well, I didn't know where you came from, but I was excited that you went zigzag, zigzag, and was telling us how you came to Riviera Beach. And I was so proud the way you represented us. I didn't know too much about you because I was gone for about a year, but I learned a lot about you that particular day. I sat there and I went through the whole thing. So let me first thank you for coming to the city of Riviera Beach, and always to the staff, they're great, they know their job, the informers. And we could always call and ask them questions. Uh, the most thing I really like is that we're getting the material like four or five days before the meeting, which is exceptional, because it gives you a chance to go out and look at the project or, uh, read a little bit more about the project. And I think that's the most important thing, because when the residents ask you questions about that project, I think you should be able to answer that question. So I do call sometimes, um, or I do go out to the project, and it gives you a little more stability of how the city's being ran. So I want to thank you for that, and once again, I enjoyed that YouTube little session that you have, thank you.
Okay, Board Member Wiley, you're next.
Yes, I just wanted to get an update on, um, sh- um, Councilwoman Shirley Lanier had the, um, traffic calming, um, meeting a couple of weeks ago. Um, and it went very successful, about thirty to forty, maybe fifty people came out, included the city manager, and, um, a couple of councilpeople, and, um, a lot of people from Public Works came out. And we actually got a lot of side work done also far as, um, some, some neighborhood cleaning in that area. And they got some of those things on the agenda, so I just wanted to, um, just give, you know, that everything went pretty good with that. And, um, hopefully in the next couple of months, that we will have, um, the beautification project in Federal Gardens. Um, UPS donated about approximately forty thousand dollars to be able to, um, upgrade the neighborhood. And hopefully that's something that we can start doing in all our neighborhoods.
Okay, um, Board Member Brown?
Not here.
Not here.
Oh, I can't see it that far down. Oh, okay, all right, Ms. Moetti, you're next.
I have no comments, but I appreciate the, uh, the presentation, it was very informative.
Okay, all right, um, Mr. Sermons, could you, um, join the podium just for a moment? I want to, uh, pose this question to the board, um, in regards to, um, board, um, vacancies and future, um, applicants. First of all, I'd like to ask the question, how does this work that we have, if I'm correct, one board seat open, is that correct? One vacancy?
There is one, um, full member vacancy and there is one alternate vacancy.
Okay, um, how does this process go with the vacancy? Is it incumbent upon the city council to, uh, move the, uh, first alternate, um, into that vacancy? Or do we as a body take that initiative?
No, vacancy positions are vacancy, I'm sorry, um, alternate positions are alternates indefinitely, unless a councilperson chooses that person to fill a, a full position. Each of the, uh, positions has an associated councilperson who's responsible for filling the seat. So some of those councilmembers have vacancy seats, uh, as well as, um, full voting member seats. And, uh, the two vacancies, um, just happen to be of District Four currently, and we are working with that councilperson to ensure, um, that her, um, recommended persons are who is brought to the board for a voting decision.
Okay, so, um, at this point, it's in the, um, purview of that councilmember and the district of applicants and, uh, moving that process forward.
Correct, uh, however, there is nothing that prohibits us from making recommendations, uh, to her. So if, uh, this body wanted to say that we've looked at applications that were submitted and this is who we recommend, we would bring that, uh, to the councilwoman for consideration.
Okay, so you've taken what my next point of discussion was, um, and I'll be honest that we've had, um, emails going back and forth, myself and Mr. Sermon, on the idea that, um, I feel that we're doing an excellent job as a board, we're just not bumps on the log. We're being, um, very pragmatic and methodical, um, as our approach of how we need to look at P and Z as a board and bringing out the best in ourselves for the city. And as I was thinking about this, we have applicants, um, who are very interested in the Planning and Zoning Board. And I did research, looking at other municipalities, on how the Planning and Zoning Board members, um, approach when there are vacancies and when there are applications. And what my thought process was, that when there are applications for consideration and they are public record, that we as a board, um, take an opportunity to look at the applications, and we as a board discuss these applicants, and we make a recommendation to the city council. Now, the city council does have the final say in terms of the vacancy and who they would like to have seated as a new board member. But I think we ought to have some consideration as a body, that we provide our thought process, um, some aspect of influence, and we present it to the city council, they do have the final decision. And I'll be honest, there could be times where the motivation to join the P and Z board isn't about what's best for the city, but what's best for someone's political career, and we become a tool in that process, which we volunteer our time away from our jobs, our family, and we put a lot of job in. And most certainly, we don't want to feel that we are being taken advantage of because of, I'm just using that as an example, someone's political aspiration. So, we cannot stop that, but I do think that we need to, um, take a look at the applicants and maybe give our recommendation. People come with various backgrounds, um, and we want to be able to say, you know, is that person, um, a, a good fit for the P and Z board and, uh, make our recommendations. I just wanted to get your feedback on that. Um, I believe, um, uh, Lake Worth, their Planning and Zoning Board, looks at applications and their board, um, give recommendation. Um, I believe I looked at, um, Miami, they do the same thing. It's across the board, um, how the approach goes, but I just wanted to get the board members' thoughts on that. I do want to say that I've had some preliminary discussions, trying to get, um, a temperature read. So far, my thought process has been well received, but I, hopefully, I don't want to violate any sunshine law, so that's why I'm here presenting it to the board, to get what, um, the board's thoughts are. So if anybody wants to jump in, I'm okay.
I agree totally with what you're saying. At, at, at this point, like I said, and I spoke on it earlier about the city moving forward far as, um, progress and, and going forward with, um, being successful, to where like you say, we need people here from, uh, let's, like you said, from the background, from an integrity standpoint, um, for morals and ethics, we definitely have to have a good fit to come into our city, and like I said, and do the right things, because like you said, we don't want someone here who has their own political agenda to be able to, um, I guess, um,
Use us till they use us up, we don't want that to happen.
Exactly, so I agree with her totally on that, on that situation of, if that's a possibility, if we can do so, or at least have some kind of recommendation to that.
If floor is open.
Um, may I make a comment, please? I think now, um, my recollections, because I think I've been here, I think, four years, the first year. I was out a couple of years and I came back, this is my third year, I think. And what they do, they put, I think they put the ad in the paper, is that right, Ms. Busby?
For the applications?
Yeah, for the applications.
We advertise them at our meeting, um, sorry, will you just?
Yes, the applications, when a vacancy becomes available, the application is posted on the city website, and the clerk's office oversees the submission of those applications. And there are multiple boards across the city for, uh, appointees. Uh, there's one form for, uh, all of them, and the clerk's office is the receiver of those applications, and they distribute them to the appropriate department or, um, or organization in the city that will oversee that board.
So, let me get back to planning and zoning, if, if I remember right. The applications come in, and then the councilpersons go over those applications, and if it's in their district, they have a choice to pick who's in the district? I know, I know you just got here, I'm, I'm just trying to work through what I'm trying to say.
A- and, and you can jump in if, if I'm incorrect on anything, Ms. Busby, but that councilperson has pretty broad discretion on who they want to bring forth for their seat on a board. That their counterparts on the council could, uh, not support, uh, their candidate and not vote for them. Uh, but generally speaking, that, uh, councilperson has wide latitude to, uh, choose the person that they bring forward. Whomever they choose must have an application on file, and, um, and presumably that, uh, councilperson has reviewed, um, their, their person who they want to recommend amongst any other applications that have been submitted. Uh, but, uh, in practice, that's how it's moved forward, there is, um, very limited language in terms of, of, um, of describing the process in our code, but that's how it's taking place in practice.
Thank you.
Chair, may I add something, Chair?
Yes.
Uh, Board Member Shepherd, I think you're not giving yourself enough credit, I think you've been here at least five years.
The first time.
Okay.
First, I've been twice, I, I was gone, I think, a couple of years then I came back, so this is now going to the third year, I think. So altogether, I think it's been about eight years.
Yeah, you are, you are a long-serving board member.
But going back to the applications, they go to the city councilmembers and anybody in their district, they have the option to pick that particular person?
If that vacancy is in their district, right?
Okay.
So yes. No, yeah, so let me be clear, um, the person that they choose on the application does not need to live in their district. It's not a requirement.
Well, the reason why I'm asking, when I came back, I, I was in District Three. And then I moved over, I didn't know it at the time until Public Works, uh, the gentleman that was the superintendent of Public Works, I was asking for a sign where I lived at, and he said, Ms. Shepherd, you're in District Two. And, um, Ms. Miller said, well, I read she was in District Three. But anyway, you know, she went on with me being, uh, in, in District Two. But I think that having the option of picking who you want in your district to work for you, so I think that's how it went.
Yeah, well, you're right in that a councilperson will probably have a preference for somebody who lives in their district, but it's not a requirement.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And, um, again, um, my suggestion is that we as a board, um, interview the applicants as well and provide, um, our recommendation to the council. And again, the decision lies solely with the council, um, but at least that we volunteer our time and spend a lot of energy, and other municipalities, um, whether it's the P and Z Board or any other board, um, their board members get a time to get acquainted with the applicants. Now, we're not going to know in the final end who is selected, but at least we've had an opportunity to, um, interview and, um, offer our recommendations, and it's up to the council whether they take that in consideration. But at least I want to say that we as a body, that we've contributed in that aspect. So that was why, um, I asked the question, and I'm gonna find out if there are any other questions. And then, Mr. Sermons, I'd like to find out, if there's consensus from the board, how would we be able to move forward with this particular, um, request that, if we agree, that we make? So let me see if there are any more questions before we get to that. Any more questions?
Madam Chair, I don't per se have a, a question, just a, a comment. Um, I would not be against making a recommendation by reviewing the applications. Um, as far as interviewing, starting here with the board, I think if staff could bring us back more information around what that would look like, to, to that process, then I, I would, I would need more information, because I'm not saying we have to do it the same way that we've always done it, but, I mean, there, there could be a, a lot with that, you know, as, as I'm thinking that through. So, I would just like, uh, to hear, or I can go and research it for myself, more information about what that looks like as far as, um, the process.
Okay, that's terrific. I just wanted to, um, propose the, um, idea, um, get other input as to how to shape it, how to do further, um, research. But I just wanted to get a temperature read, you know, as to what everyone thinks about that, so that maybe we can explore it further. So it was just a broad, um, conversation, just to see what you guys thought and where we could possibly go. So, Ms. Wiley?
One more question. Um, I know we came on together, um, about two, three years ago, two, two years ago.
I think it's been less than that, right, Ms. Burgess, Ms. Wiley and I? We're only how old?
Wait a minute.
Yeah, it's about two years ago, about two years ago. Um, and I was just wondering, have they adopted, um, I know at that point, they were trying to adopt the system to where they were, um, how they got, um, appointed someone to this position, because I know it wasn't done by what area they're in, what district they're in. They voted on a five-point process, and they put the names in a row, and then your first choice got five points, your second choice got four points, and all the way to, um, I guess to zero, I think it was five people at the time. Do they still have that, was that process actually adopted in? Or they, or is something new now at this point, because like I said, I know it was some, some, some time ago.
I'll defer to Ms. Busby on that one.
Yeah, that process was not adopted. So, we're really going by the practice and procedure that we had used over the years. But if there's an alternate process that you want to propose, I think that that's something worthwhile to bring back to the city council board to consider.
It's open discussion. Um, my thought, not necessarily to change their process, but we as a board, um, have some consideration, um, in terms of, either interviewing the applicants or going through the applications and having discussions amongst ourselves. It's not finalized, this is just broad, open conversation to get a temperature read, we can begin to shape it out. But, uh, again, um, other municipalities, um, their P and Z or other boards have an opportunity to have some sort of, um, or offer some sort of, um, recommendation or suggestion. We know that it lies in the councilperson's hands, we know that. But at least, um, we're bringing some value to the process, whether it's taken or not, that's up to the board. But at least we've done some things that we have really looked at the applicants, and, um, we've made suggestions or recommendations. And so it sounds like from the consensus of the board, that we'd like to explore this more. And so I'd like to ask, Mr. Sermons, how does this shape out? We've never done it before, my premise is just because we haven't done it in the past, doesn't mean that we cannot do it in the future. Our goal here is to, um, change the paradigm or improve the paradigm, whatever those may be, subject matters of what we're talking about. Our goal here is to change the paradigm or improve the paradigm, whatever those may be, subject matters of what we're talking about.
And I, I think one of the biggest things is currently in our ordinances, it speaks to the composition of this board and the fact that those members must be appointed by council. But in terms of the process, it isn't well-defined, and it probably has evolved and been done differently in different administrations. But based on this conversation, what staff can do is draft up a policy that would govern how we fill the positions. And we can take that policy after deliberation and discussion with this body. We can take that resolution to the council, and if it pleases them, they can adopt the policy that we can use moving forward for staffing this board. Again, being here for the last appointment, I think there was some confusion over exactly which positions and exactly how the process should work. So, what we can do is come, do some research and draft a proposal based on this conversation on what that process will look like. And if everyone here is satisfied with it, it's something that staff could move to city council for consideration.
That's a process with the council. I don't think P and Z had a process where we had a chance to discuss the applications or even meet the interviewees, if you will, or the applicants. I don't think that may have been in, in place. So, that could possibly be new for us, but not to change what the city council does. That's incumbent upon them.
Correct. That policy could outline how an application goes, gets to consideration in front of city council. So, where the application goes, who reviews it, whether this board wants to formally meet, gather, interview to create a recommendation, things like that, we can flesh out in a policy and, and take it to council for consideration.
Okay, terrific. I just think we should explore that.
Absolutely, we will work on that.
Do, is this a broad, general comm, comment or discussion? And that we don't need to vote on this or not? Okay, so just rock, and we don't have to vote on it?
And staff will take this conversation under direction and, and come back to you at a near-term meeting with our findings and something that could potentially be voted on for this body.
Okay, I know that we got the one vacancy. There are probably applications in the process or pipeline. This process may start to move a little bit further in terms of council. And I'm just hoping that we get at least some kind of, what's the word I want to say? Feedback or recommendation, not that we would necessarily meet the timing, but if we don't meet the timing, at least for the future.
Absolutely, we can work on that.
All right.
One more question. Mr. Sherman, I think some of our seats are up, will be expiring. Do you have any idea? I know it's an expiration date for each one of us, and we should be coming around to reapply for our positions.
Yes, that is information I don't have in front of me, but yes, there is a sunset on the appointee positions. And at the time, we typically bring those names back to council to see if they would like to recommend for you all to stay on or if they would like to change their, their appointee for the position.
Thank you. All right, thank you, everyone, for your feedback and your, your comments. And if we do not have any further business, our meeting is adjourned. And I wish everybody a safe and restful Memorial Day weekend.
Thank you, Madam Chair.